Order this Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the East Hampton Board of Education. If you would please rise and join me. It is the mission of the East Hampton Public Schools to partner with our families and communities to prepare competent, compassionate and collaborative learners who navigate a complex global society. This evening, I don't believe we have any recognitions. I also do not, I don't have a screen that's working, shall I do? Is there anyone online?
No.
And we have no updates from our labor union this evening, audience of citizens, is there anyone who would like to speak? Hearing none. The consent agenda for this evening includes the minutes from the September twenty second board meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So.
The motion?
Second.
And a second, and discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, committee reports, I believe our student representative is in Washington DC.
So, good evening, members of the board. We actually have our second representative who is here with us this evening. So, the one who has been with you, Will Faber, Will has actually been, he is in Washington with his class. But we have the honor of introducing you to our junior representative this year, and her name is Pearl Gaston. And Pearl will be here for these meetings, and Pearl, unfortunately, you don't have to stay for the entire meeting if you don't want. But I do think that you may wish to want to be here to hear all the wonderful things that we talk about as board member, as board. But please come to the front, this is your opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on with the district.
Good evening, everyone. The past few weeks, thank you, the past two weeks have been very busy. The EHHS marching band had an awesome performance at the Big E on the twenty fourth. And Little Rain didn't deter us, they actually brightened up just before we stepped off into a parade block. The Veterans Day Committee has at the same time been making great strides in preparation for our fundraiser for the VFW. The advisory committee has also started putting in place solid plans for our upcoming events to support community awareness, which will take place just before Thanksgiving break. And finally, on October third, the Student Council held our first fall pep rally, which was a great success, featuring performance from the band, lag team, cheer squad, and even an impromptu indoor parade. Last week was a great week for East Hampton sports. The girls soccer team had three games and won all three, keeping their undefeated record. The boys soccer team played HK last Saturday and went two to one after losing to them just a week earlier. On Monday, they faced the first ranked team, Morgan, and lost three to zero. However, they came back strong on Thursday against Cromwell, tying the game in the last two minutes for a final score of two to two. The girls volleyball team held their annual dig pink game last Friday, winning in four sets against Old Line. Dempsey Russell had some great hits from the outside, Sophia Long and Jasmine Martin had several strong hits from the middle, and Olivia Byer and Sophia Resco should contribute powerful plays from the right side. Also, they'll fight Chelsea Ryan. There were also some amazing saves from Avery France. It was an exciting week all around for East Hampton Athletics.
Thank you so much, Pearl. We're really excited to have you. Thank you for being here. All right, update from our administrative.
Good evening. Schedules for this Friday's Professional Learning Day are finalized across the district. Our staff will engage in professional learning around restorative practices. This training aligns with the new school climate policy the board adopted in late June. And the session will provide staff with an introduction to the topic as well as learning tasks designed to deepen understanding around the importance of high quality relationships among all school community members to support positive community building. We are proud of the longstanding commitment of this district to positive relationship building and see this as an opportunity to further develop that work as we reflect on practical strategies to establish classroom and school-wide routines. While the rest of the staff is working on that, staff at Memorial School will focus on the continued rollout of our literacy compendium, in line with Connecticut's right to read legislation. Our district is implementing wit and wisdom, it's a four-part compendium, wit and wisdom, geodes, foundations, and integrity. Each of these tools emphasizes a different aspect of early literacy. Foundations focuses on phonics instruction, and integrity, phonemic awareness instruction, both have been implemented in our district for many years. Recent professional learning has focused on our knowledge-based curriculum wit and wisdom. However, this Friday, our teachers in grades K three will focus on geodes. Geodes is a line of content-rich decodable books that support early learners in their development of phonics and decoding skills while simultaneously building background knowledge. So we're excited to take this next step because it's really the fourth piece of a four-part compendium that we'll be implementing. In addition to these formal areas of learning, we will also have time at each building to focus on building base needs, whether fall data analysis, department or grade level planning time together, and some ongoing focus on Miesk, our high school accreditation process, and NIAC, our preschool accreditation process. Our PDAC team will meet again on October twentieth to review feedback from this session. We survey our teachers after every professional learning day to get their feedback and input for future sessions. So we'll review that feedback as well as plan for the next professional learning day on November fourth. These days are very valuable to us. We want to make sure that the work is very targeted to the needs of our team. I'd like to take this opportunity, I talk about PDAC a lot, but I don't always recognize the members of that teacher leadership committee. From Memorial School, I'd like to recognize Liz Pezzi, Beth Hadu, and Carrie Snurcha. From Center School is represented with Eileen Erlinson, Carrie Binningme, and Kate Cody. Middle School, Pam Penn, Carrie Parsons, and Kumi Lewis. And from the High School, Regina Delavote and Melissa Reynolds. Representing the administrative team are Joey Bauer and Eric Werner, and Deb Field represents our parent educator team. So everyone comes together so that we can make sure that this valuable time is implemented effectively. As we discussed at our last meeting, we were finishing up our fall assessment window as students return. As a result, our buildings have additional rounds of academic intervention and tutoring that will be taking place. After that September assessment window, data is carefully reviewed and teacher, with teachers throughout each building's data team process. And student supports are adjusted based on current student performance information. New rounds of tiered instructional supports will begin October fourteenth at the K five level and October twentieth at the middle school level. Finally, one of my favorite programs in the district, each year we support our beginning teachers through the team process. Team stands for Teacher Educator and Mentoring Program, you've heard me talk about it in the past. This is a process required for ongoing certification in Connecticut. And it requires teachers in their first two years in the field to engage in additional professional learning and develop formal products that demonstrate this ongoing learning to ensure the highest quality instruction for students. Matched with a mentor teacher, our beginning teachers have additional support for all aspects of their teacher responsibilities and their career development. It really speaks to the investment of our veteran teachers as they fill these roles as mentors. So that process is underway for our beginning teachers in the district. We've met with them to review the program requirements along with the support of their mentors, and we'll continue to support that process and nurture their growth over the first two years of their career. Thank you very much.
Good evening. The fall season has brought many beloved events back to Memorial School. Two weeks ago, the elementary PTO hosted the annual Jagathon at both Memorial and Center Schools. The students solicited sponsors, got lots of exercise, and had tons of fun on our front lawn while funds were raised for future events. The Jagathon is one of the PTO's largest fundraisers, and we're so thankful for their continued support. Our garden club is back up and running. The club meets Monday afternoons, and so far they have weeded the garden, harvested tomatoes and cucumbers, as well as mint. The tomatoes and cucumbers have also been used in our school cafeteria, and they are planning to set up some taste tests for other students with the mint. Last week, all the students who met their summer reading, math, and/or fitness goals were treated to an outdoor celebration and recognition of their success and perseverance. We're so proud of our learners for taking care of their minds and bodies this summer. Also, last week, we welcomed a new therapy dog named MacGyver. Sadly, our previous canine friend Barnabas passed away at the start of the school year. Barnabas brought nothing but love, comfort, and kindness to everyone who spent time with him over the twelve years of his life. While he was beginning to slow down last year, he still showed up for his bi-weekly visits to Memorial with his tail wagging, a kind spirit, and plenty of sweetness to go around. We were all a little surprised by his death, and he will be missed by everyone. MacGyver is Barnabas's nephew. He is equally kind, very happy, and has a little bit more spunk. We are looking forward to a wonderful year of cuddles and smiles with our new friend. This week, we are recognizing Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Week. Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids is a statewide grant program that helps establish and further farm-to-school programs through Connecticut schools. Memorial uses food from a variety of our local farms, and Kate Caselli does a fantastic job of highlighting those farms in our school cafeteria each week. In recognition of these partnerships, Memorial will host a Dress Like a Farmer Day on Wednesday, and Kate will speak with our students about all that our local farms do to keep us healthy.
I have a question.
Sure.
How much money did the PTO raise?
Oh, I would have to check in with them on the exact total. They were still collecting. Center School's event was a week after Memorial's, and the collection stays open for, I think, two weeks post the actual event. So I don't have a total, a total number, but it is a large sum.
Good evening, everyone. At the middle school, we have already begun to share information with our eighth grade students as we work closely with them and their families to prepare for this important transitional year. In September, students had the opportunity to hear from BOAG, and later this month, representatives from VINAL will come speak to our students. Throughout the year, we'll also offer opportunities for East Hampton High School staff to visit, as well as for our students to tour the high school and explore the many great opportunities available here in district. This is an exciting time, and we're honored to partner with families to support each child's unique needs. We were thrilled to have a great turnout of parents last week who attended our informal night to talk about all the support and fun that will take place this year. We are excited to be continuing this year with our Project Oceanology partnership. Project Oceanology's Connecticut River Connections Program is a grant program funded by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Middle school classes from school districts along the Connecticut River are partnered for a joint investigation of the watershed they share. This amazing opportunity for our seventh grade scientists experience off-site learning on seven very engaging field trips throughout the year with no cost to us. Twenty-five students will be selected early next week, and their first trip is towards the end of the month. Permission slips went out this evening to invite interested eighth graders to attend this year's ACM Aerospace Alley Future Workforce Opportunities Fair that will take place October thirtieth. Eighth graders, along with students from the high school, will provide the opportunity to speak with over ninety local aerospace firms to learn about the valuable career opportunities that exist and discuss the expectations employers have when hiring, as well as see firsthand leading-edge manufacturing technologies used across Connecticut and Western Massachusetts. As Joey mentioned, this week is Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Week. So on Thursday during all lunch waves, Kate Caselli, our nutrition director, will be running a corn-shucking contest in all grade levels. The grade that shucks the most corn and the fastest time will earn points to our year-long competition, and the corn will be thoroughly cleaned prior to use. Thank you.
You better get all those hairs off there. Year-long competition, what's the prize at the end of the year?
So, at the end of the year last year, we're hoping to do something similar. PTO funded a carnival event coming at the end of the year for seventh grade who won last year. And there were jump houses, there was cotton candy, music was provided by our athletic director, Mike Mercaldi. So it was a really great time, and I think kids are eager to win it again this year.
Presented by the PTO.
It was funded by the PTO. Yeah. Do me.
Good evening, everybody. As Dr. Van Tassel stated, Mr. Werner and the seniors departed for their annual Washington DC trip well before the sunrise this morning. They have arrived and on their evening tour of the monuments, so we look forward to their trip update and progress. Congratulations are in order to senior Maddie Daniels on being recognized as the PSAT NMSQT commended student. Committed students placed among the top fifty thousand nationally who entered the twenty twenty-six NMSQT competition by participating in the twenty twenty-four preliminary SAT Scholarship Qualifying Test. So congratulations to Maddie. EHHS hosted an annual volleyball dig pink fundraiser and interacts many for a cure last Friday. Together, the events raised more than seventeen hundred dollars that night to benefit the Sandy Pozinski Breast Cancer Foundation. Thank you to the many families and local businesses that donated to the wonderful raffle prizes. EHHS will be proctoring the annual PSATs next week, Wednesday, October fifteenth, to the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes. EHHS Student Climate Committee and senior athletes had an opportunity to attend an in-house leadership seminar with Kendrick Moore. Students and staff be working with Kendrick Moore this year to help with our climate initiatives. And planning is underway for the annual Veterans Day Program on November seventh at EHHS. EHHS families were sent a QR code to invite local veterans to breakfast and the assembly.
Ready for Mr. Engel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. In your package, we supplied what we call our first budget report for the year, and it's probably a little different. As we speak about in our finance subcommittee, take a look at it, if there's something that you'd like to see differently, let me know, and we're going to absorb it for the next couple of months. We are going to be, we're slowly updating the encumbrances. It's a term that's basically, it's our obligation for the balance of the year in there. Those numbers will change as we move through on the expended side. The encumbrance should reduce unless we, for example, unless we fulfill a few positions that were open for like the fifty-one eleven line, that would change as well. So just bear in mind that it's a, it's a dynamic report, okay, and every month you should see something different out there. And in terms of the audit, we're moving through our audit currently with the town. We've been supplying the auditors with all the information that they requested as of today, and as of the writing of this, we haven't heard anything good, bad, or indifferent from the auditor, so that's, that's good news. Fiscal year twenty-six update, you see the file that we gave you, and the encumbrances, I give a brief explanation of my narrative as to the encumbrances. But we're also going through an audit review of our foods program. And Kate Casell, as you've heard mention, has been doing a fantastic job. I stopped over, we chat, we're over different financials with her, and she's, she's doing very well. There's also what we call SNAP Conference, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth at Foxwoods that she'll be attending. She'll be taking some of her food managers at different days over there also to make, introduce them to what's going on there. But it's, it's, it's a, you've never been, it's, it's a, it gives you all the latest laws. It goes through the requirements of the state, the federal government, all the grants that she's dealing with. As well as, on the last day of the conference, it's a full-blown menu of just about every type of food that's out there, they actually, you can taste test it. You can gain ten pounds there in two minutes, trust me. And finally, we're going to be reviewing the final updates that we're going to be sending out to the principals and their, and their secretaries tomorrow. We hope to get it all out to them tomorrow. So we're trying to get those updates ready so we can actually start the fiscal twenty-seven budget. I know everybody loves to hear that. So if there's any questions, please let me know, and then we'll, we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. One question, I just noticed newspaper advertising number five-five-four-zero, you'd used up, you'd allotted amount for the year, and the fiscal year or the school year is basically just begun. So do you, do you know what this was used for?
I could get back to you on that. I, again, I was, I was not supposed to be here.
Oh.
And not, so I will get back to you on that, and we'll find out.
Yeah, they serve that, you know. Yep, it was just begun.
So we don't have a lot budgeted there. One of the areas that we've run into some issues, I could speak to that, is that we believe where the funds have gone was for a recent advertisement that we put into the riveries for substitute teachers. So we'll go back to just double-check that, but I have a feeling that's where those funds went. We don't budget a lot for that, we don't do a lot of newspaper postings, and that would be one that we felt so necessary in this moment.
Right. May I ask a question, Christina, sorry? The ACM thing, that's, that's dear to my heart. Did you say that slips went home with the kids for?
No, I sent through parents where a Google form, for those that are interested, families would sign them up.
Were they in the certain class, or did we all get that? Yeah, eighth grade, yeah. Okay.
I sent it, the schedule's a lot fixed today.
Oh, okay, so I went, okay. It's six PM tonight?
Six today.
Okay, okay. So I haven't seen that yet. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, subcommittee report personnel.
The only thing is that the superintendent will have an update on the administrative contract during his report. Right?
Thank you. Housing for Gilam, Mr. Barber is not here this evening, but there was no person, or Housing for Gilam meeting today. Bang, transportation building in the lab.
And we had a meeting tonight before this meeting, and we went over what Ray went over as far as the update. And we do plan on having these meetings continuously once a month to try to keep more on top of what's going on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening, members of the board. Last week, in terms of our finance department and some of the changes or transitions that we have been going through, we met with Lauren to review the potential of supporting payroll as we plan for transition in December with our payroll specialist. We have posted an internal posting for this payroll position, internal posting by contract will be there for five days. And depending on whether or not we have an internal candidate within the district that we believe could qualify to help support that role, we did discuss with Learn, which is your regional education service center, whether they could provide support. Currently, they're in over five school districts right now, supporting business departments on things such as payroll. And they have enough staff within their department to be able to support the district, if it's the direction that we would like to go. They do have a per diem rate. The chief financial officer was going to provide for us what that contract would look like. They believe that if it were to be with us, that they would be able to fulfill the role of payroll itself in about two to three days with a set rate for those days. However, there is facets beyond payroll that our current payroll specialist actually does. And some of the discussion has been with our payroll specialist that she could potentially remain on to provide a little bit of the opportunity for faculty and staff connection. A lot of questions do come into payroll over the course of the school year where she would be able to provide some of that support if we were to go with third party in this case. But at this point in time, we posted it internally. We are hopeful that we may have an internal candidate for this position, but we will certainly find out within five days. But if we aren't able to have that, it would probably be in our best interest to look at the third-party option with Learn moving forward. The Centec report, I just want to give you an update in terms of Centec's indoor air quality report. So this is a reminder that we have been able to schedule them to come to the board on November twenty-fourth. That is to provide an update regarding the Memorial Center and Middle School PCT project reviews. We have received a draft report for the middle school, and there was quite a bit that was on there. Some significant expenses that we talked about this evening. We don't have set numbers, but based on their indoor air quality review for the middle school, which wasn't a school that we were thinking we're going to need a lot of upgrades, it turns out that we do there. We have not seen the report for Center School, which is our largest concern. And we have not seen a report from Memorial School. However, those three schools will be a part of that presentation, which will then help to perform our capital requests for the future. In addition to their efforts with our indoor air quality study, we contracted with Centec to review the capacity needed for the replacement boilers at Memorial School. We anticipate that we will be able to lower the capacity level due to more modern technologies than we currently have with those boilers, of which would help reduce the cost of the replacement boilers. Once Centec is able to actually do that audit, they did come in on Thursday and Friday of this past week. Once they are able to draft a report as to whether we can reduce perhaps some of the BTU outage based on what's needed in that school presently, we are going to take the necessary steps to replace at least a non-functioning boiler before the winter season. Please note that we are currently down to a single boiler at Memorial School, which means that we want to hope for the continuous warm weather that we've been experiencing so that we don't run into circumstances where we are putting a lot of demand on that current boiler that's functioning. Facilities Director Fontenella has been on top of this since the issue began, and he's already been researching companies that we may be able to contract with for the replacement through a state-approved procurement list, which may help us if we decide to bypass bidding processes to get a boiler in there prior to the start of the winter season. Well, Steve and I have been working very closely with town finance director Joka, as well as town manager Cox on this project. Determination still has yet to be made as to whether that's going to be a project that the Board of Education will vote on based on the bids, or if it's a project that the town council will vote on. That determination has not been made yet, but our hope is, is either to have the bidding be done within the next two weeks, unless we're able to go through the procurement list that's been provided to us from the state bids. Administrator negotiations. As mentioned by myself this evening, so tomorrow evening, the town council will be discussing the administrator contract as they did not approve it at their last meeting. Chair Kohler and I have asked that Attorney Sherrin be present at the meeting to represent the Board of Education. If the town council opts not to approve the administrator contract, it will move to arbitration. Currently, the contract is situated almost a full percentage point below the state average for administrator contracts. We have shared this information, as well as some of the other changes to the contract that would likely lean in favor of the administrators if this were arbitrated. But at this time, we are uncertain whether the contract will be approved. We will make the best case that we potentially can tomorrow evening. You as board members are all welcome to attend tomorrow's evening meeting, but I will let you know the outcome of their meeting following it tomorrow evening. Excellence in Education Parent Series, this is actually partially an update for me, but on account of events too. Following last year's budget deliberations and in the spirit of gaining support surrounding our school-based initiatives, we will be hosting the first of our six special sessions in our Excellence in Education Parent Series on Thursday, October sixteenth. The title of the session is Behind the Curtains: Belltown Drama is More Than Just Play. Directors Mansfield, Orma, and Winat will be showcasing their theater programs, and I've also heard that there may be some special encore performances that might be happening that evening for all the guests who are in attendance. I'm hopeful that all of this year's events, all that we have planned over the course of the year, will help to raise awareness of the important programs we offer in the district as well as elucidate that funding for our schools needs to be prioritized to continue making our schools an attractive option, offering these wonderful programs for families living in the town of East Hampton. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
I have one. For the boiler, I just thought about this as you were speaking. You're talking about perhaps because of efficiencies, reducing the amount of BTU boiler we put out. My concern is the target temperature that the contractor is intending on maintaining for our schools during the height of the winter. At the worst case, the winter temperatures. I'm concerned, I don't know, when they get their report, it should be in the report what they plan on, what temperature they plan to maintain a school, as the lowest temperature the school can maintain, can stay open to. In other words, zero degrees? In other words, zero degrees. We have, we've got minus ten degrees sometimes, well, this is gonna be a fifty-year project. We don't wanna replace it, you know, anytime soon in case the feathers get cold. So just. So my question is uh, or we're common is to have the. Contractor put in the target temperature that they will intend, maintain, they expect to maintain under the BTU.
Okay, to your point. We had, we, we had considered just putting out to bid. Whether or not. The companies who would come in to bid that project. Could put together. A proposal that included perhaps a lesser BTU unit. We made the determination because that is out of our scope of expertise. That it would be best to go with a, a very qualified contractor. You come in there to do the assessment of need. Related to those boilers. And I am certain, and I assure you, having hired this group. That they will be looking at what is necessary for output. To reach whatever temperatures that school would need to be based at. It was, it was a, a, a scope of expertise that we were looking to tap into because we don't have all of that. So I would trust that this group that's coming in here is gonna give us really a full outline as to. This is what the capacity is right now that you have. This is why it's not necessary. And with it, give explanations so that we're not in a situation where we're concerned. That these lesser BTU boilers were right now. Uh, it produces five million BTUs. What they have shared is that the systems, because now those systems don't feed. As large of the area of the school because we have alternate systems that are already in place at that school. That it wasn't, that, that when those boilers were put in, some of these additional design elements that have now been included through the years. That also produce heat for that school. We don't need that size of a boiler in essence is what they're saying, so. But that's why we've gone with them, their qualifications should. Provide for us a very clear picture of this is all you need in this moment. And I would, I, I think there's still a level of trust, we have to trust that these recommendations that they're making. Uh, but this is what they do, and this is why we've gone with that.
Okay, do we, is there a certain temperature of the school that we would close a school down because it's too cold for students?
I can tell you that if it's ten degrees below zero in the, in the schools, we're closing school. But I would think that my, I, I, I just, um. We try to maintain these classrooms as close to room temperature as you can. What's challenging in schools is their broad expanses of buildings. If you turn it up too much. Those classrooms that are closest to the boilers. Are gonna get really warm, and that's just to make sure that the ones at the tail end of it. Are able to at least reach that room temperature. So it's a balancing element of it, and you will as a board hear and as the administrators do. Well, my room is cold, my room is really warm. It's never a situation where it's perfect within the schools based on your size of those schools. But we try to maintain those rooms at room temperature. I can't speak to what's the statute or the laws per temperature. But I would think that part of that indoor air quality study, that would be a great question that we can present to Centec is. When you're aiming for indoor air quality and temperature, albeit they're looking more at airflow. They could probably give us a sense as this is what the standard is that we're trying to make sure is available to all classroom spaces or all office spaces within a school.
Way up.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Do you wanna give us an enrollment reports?
Okay. So when you're bored packed this evening, you're going to see that from last. So from this, this most recent September to October, we have increased by three students in the district, varied into different grade levels. You're gonna see ups and downs in each of the levels, but we're a plus three uh, starting October from where we were in September. In terms of students with special education services, we're an increase by one student. But you're gonna see ups and downs uh, within each of the uh, schools. But we're a plus one for special education identified students. Terms of five oh four, uh, we are a plus six. And a lot of those did come, uh, I know there's been some questions as to whether there's a lot of changes that happened at the high school. Um, in our case, high school remained consistent with five oh four. Those increases were really at Memorial School, which is not surprising, those are the students that we are just seeing. Uh, for the first times coming into school, so your plus six that you're going to see were actually at uh, Memorial School. And I'm trying to think on here. Uh, and that is what I'm looking at overall, and so I have a plus six overall, but I'm really seeing at Memorial. But that's really a plus seven, so my adding is wrong, I apologize, we're plus seven for five oh four. And that is my enrollment report.
All right, this evening we are going to hear about our district advancement plan.
Okay, at the beginning of each year, we like to share with the board the work uh, that we will be undergoing over the course of the year. If you also recall in June of last year, our administrators came and had shared some of the outcomes as it related to these advancement plan goals. School advancement plans are one and the same with school improvement plans. Uh, they're uh, construct where we identify what we have for priorities for the upcoming year. As well as what are those objectives that we are trying to reach. I began last year's presentation, I'm gonna review this again with you, and I think it's important to highlight this, so. Uh, sorry that you can't see the entire thing within the context of the slideshow, but it is uh, in the packets that you have. Uh, this framework here was developed by the Public Education Leadership Project at Harvard. And what it does is it provides a construct that gives you kind of this bigger picture of concentric circles. Of things that are impacting what's most important in school districts. And that is, is what's happening right within the classroom, within the instructional core, teacher, content, student. Surrounding the work of what's happening within those classrooms, there's a lot of moving parts. What you're gonna hear tonight is about the strategy, it's about those goals and objectives that we are establishing. To help get at that instructional core of what's happening within the classrooms. What I wanna draw attention to this evening is especially important. And that is, is that surrounding those areas of strategy. Are all of the influences. That have a tremendous impact on schools' ability to meet their objectives and goals. So if we look at what's surrounding them, I'm sorry, I have my, my complete one that's out in front of me here. I wanna just kinda go through these, and if we think back to where we were budgetarily speaking and why these uh, why, why. Uh, budget impacts could be so significant. So around the strategy, we have the structures that are in the school. Those structures are the systems that we have established, uh, such as your intervention services. And those programs that we have for interventions, classroom sizes, those are structures. All of those being influenced by budget, which that in turn have influence over what happens in the instructional core. Resources, we know that during our budget deliberations, there were resources that we had included. That we had to back away from some of those resources. And as a result of that, we're trying to meet the objectives of our advancement plans. But yet, we're struggling in that regard because we don't have all the resources that we need. What you see in the top left, culture is also extremely important. When you're seeing that you're losing large numbers of staff. You're having high classroom sizes, all of those types of impacts affect cultures within schools. And why it's so important that those resources, we, we continue to advocate for the schools and the resources. So that these influential pieces that are surrounding our strategies are in place. And then at far outside of this are things such as contracts. Laws that have changed, funding models that have changed, all of these elements then together. If you kind of work your way from the outside, coming in, the more stable you are in the periphery. The more able you are going to be able to, to meet the needs of where our faculty and staff are requiring supports. Our students are requiring supports, and the content by which we are delivering to them is extremely important. I didn't have this to share, I had this and presented this to you last year, but it's hard to define it when you haven't been here. To be able to explain where these impacts. This model has been researched. That these are areas that boards of educations and school districts should look at when making its decisions. And why it's so important for us to begin though with strategy. So the next slide gets to really where it all starts. In June, I asked the board. To work with the district in developing its Board of Education goals. I thank the board because you remain consistent with your goals, some, it's okay for goals to change year over year. But consistency is also important because it allows for us to continue the efforts based on where are the advancement plans. Coming from in that previous year. At some point, we recognize that there will be shifts that will happen with Board of Education goals, and that's really, really important. But Board of Education goals are at the fifty thousand foot level. It's the work that happens within those schools that brings it closer and closer to the instructional core of what's happening. Our three Board of Education goals were all used in the development of advancement plans. So there is a through line by which the work of the board. Becomes the work of what we're doing within each of our schools within the advancement plans. What's also important, and you, if you recall back at the beginning of our budget planning uh, for fiscal year twenty six, and you'll see fiscal year twenty seven. We focus on these goals because it's the goals that are really driving. The, the, the resource allocation of the school district, the budget requests, where the resources should be going. And it's also important that our administrators are having that awareness of the resources that are going to be coming their way. As they develop their advancement plans. So the earlier you can also get budgets approved. The earlier it is that your administrators can develop those advancement plans because they know those resources are there. We weren't certain what the human resources were gonna be, as well as the program resources until the budget was formally approved in July. So that, and that the influence of everything on the external, it's very important to consider as we move forward. Um, but even with it being as it was, even though we were delayed in beginning it, our administrators have done great work. Already in developing their advancement plan for the year that keeps focus. Uh, to what the needs are within the schools and those priorities. And at this point in time, I'm going to have Director Curriculum Clark uh, come to you and share with you our district and school priorities for the year.
Evening. Um, so on the slide you can see really kind of going from those larger board goals to what are the, the. Specific projects that we're gonna be working on building to building. And first and foremost, in that first goal, we're really looking at how we are establishing safe and welcoming schools for all learners. And so you see across the buildings that positive school climate um, is a key priority. We know we have that new legislation to implement, and so that's really looking at how um, we build relationships. Relationships with students, excuse me, and we repair those relationships when problems occur. Um, and so there are some really specific strategies we can use from contracts in classrooms to establish norms and expectations. Um, to specific structures that teachers and students and staff can engage in when problems occur. Um, if we think in our own families, for example, there's times where there's um, disagreement or people aren't on the same page. And we use specific strategies to try and come together, and we're looking at schools to really reflect that, how we in communities. Um, maintain close relationships and repair when challenges occur. Um, and so you see that across the buildings. When we think about goal two around the quality of instruction. Inquiry, problem solving, critical thinking, those higher order thinking skills, you see that articulated in each building differently depending on. The specific areas that are targeted, so at Memorial School, for example. Our new K three reading program is a huge area of emphasis for us. It's not new, I feel like I've been talking to you about it for many years as we engaged in finding the right program. And this implementation is a huge initiative for Memorial School. Um, additionally, the NIAC accreditation at the preschool level really looks at how our youngest learners, those that we welcome earliest to our district. How we ensure that that environment reflects the early learning developmental standards. To support the whole child's development, preschool looks at, looks at academic learning, but also um, a child's social learning. Um, and their physical development as well. Looking at center school again, as we think about um, the high quality instruction, a big focus for us there. Is our data team process and engaging our staff in reflecting on that student achievement data and planning for students. You'll see that reflected in the middle school as well. Um, but also we're really focused heavily on our collaboration between special education and mathematics. I spoke to you about the state's professional development grant that we had qualified for. Um, for additional services and funding to focus on that partnership, how we're supporting um, students with individualized education plans in the area of mathematics. Unfortunately, the funding around that, um, at our most latest update uh, from the state, that funding has been pulled, originated from federal dollars. Um, and that funding has been put on hold is the, the most information we have at this time, the state is appealing that decision. But we haven't gotten any clarity yet as to whether that appeal will be, um. You know, uh, create any change in that decision. But to the credit of center school staff, they really want this to be a target area. We've seen very nice gains, I look forward to sharing with you our student achievement data at our next meeting. Um, and they want to continue to look at how they can grow success for all learners, so that one sort of tackles goals two and three. Um. And at the high school, continuing to reflect on our implementation of dual enrollment and early college experience courses. You know that was a big focus for us as we qualified for state grant funds. We've implemented a lot of those courses and now we need to do that reflective work of seeing how those courses are. Um, engaging our students and meeting their needs longitudinally. Um, as well as continued focus on student achievement around the S A T. Um, so again, across buildings, you see some commonalities like school climate where that's a shared initiative. And then you'll hear more from the building principals about their building specific goals. Tonight you'll hear from Memorial School and East Hampton Middle School.
What, wait, what question?
Of course.
Lack of funding from the state regarding that program you're talking about. Is that going to impact our education level for, for the special education students?
We were really going to engage in ongoing professional learning with the staff around research-based strategies that would support students who. Based on their individualized education plans may demonstrate um, skill deficits. That are limiting their ability to perform on grade level, how to target that and how to rapidly accelerate that learning. Um, it did mean having access to external professional development. Um, we started that in June, we sent a team of. This is challenging my memory, four teachers and um, two teacher leaders to a week-long institute in June. And then there was gonna be ongoing work where those consultants from the state came in and observed our practices and worked closely, not only with our mathematics. Um, area teachers, but also our special education teachers. And we were able to, again, go to that June institute, we partnered with our leads from the state over the summer. Um, Mr. Moore and I attended many planning sessions as well as round Mosier. Um, professional learning around I E V quality and how to review the quality of I E Ps. We accessed every piece of learning that we could, but the funding ended September thirtieth. And so our ability to continue to access that external support ends. But the learning that we did take in June through uh, September thirty. We're really seeing how we internally can lead that work and continue to apply that learning to grow student performance. We're focusing on it there this year at center school. And then considering how we could share that with our colleagues um, in other buildings. So the grant had us target one building. So we started with center, um, but the learning that we do there this year will share with our colleagues across the district. So in short, the lack of funding does impact our ability to maintain, I think, as much growth as we had hoped to make. But I'm optimistic that with our skilled practitioners and the professional resources we were able to access, that we'll still be able to make progress. That's a high priority test. Great, thank you. Okay.
You can't see the whole thing, but. Skipping ahead to um, our first priority literacy at Memorial School. Foundational literacy skills will continue to be a priority at Memorial School. As you know, after piloting several literacy programs over the last few years. We have selected the state recommended literacy compendium that includes Haggerty, Foundations, Geodes, and Witten Wisdom. Mary just spoke to that as well. Mary just spoke to that as well. This compendium of resources has been adopted in grades K through three. In order to ensure a smooth transition, deliver lessons with fidelity, and guarantee that all learners have access to this instruction. We've crafted a building-wide schedule that aligns with the recommended instructional minutes for each component of the compendium. So that was a little bit of an undertaking. Um, the compendium, as you've heard us both say, has four components. Each of those components require a specific amount of instructional minutes in order to be in order to be delivered with fidelity. And so anytime you are adopting um something that impacts the instructional minutes in your day, it does require kind of an overhaul of the building schedule uh because in order to get um those minutes in across four grades along with recess and lunch and related arcs and all of those things, you know, that does result in really a new look or a fresh look at at how our day is run. Uh, so that did happen this year as well. We also built a professional learning schedule that has allowed our classroom and special education teachers to spend time understanding the research-informed development of this compo- compendium as well as learning how to implement its components. This learning plan began last year, as you've heard Mary mention, was the focus of much of our August in-service this year. And will continue to be our focus during any remaining in-service opportunities throughout the remainder of the year. Additionally, we will use our grade level ELA collaborative meetings to ensure that each team's delivery of lessons remains aligned and paced appropriately. Our learners' reading success will be measured through the I Ready Reading Diagnostic Assessment, which is administered three times a year in grades one through three. By the end of the year, our goal is that seventy-five percent or higher of memorial students will be reading on or above grade level. Additionally, while we don't have any baseline data, we will be closely monitoring our students' achievement on the Witten Wisdom end of module tasks. Which is an assessment that is given at the end of each module of Witten Wisdom. Where we expect to see an increasing percentage of learners scoring at a level three or higher on the task's four-point rubric. We don't have a baseline, so it was difficult to set a goal for that, uh but we will be looking for just increased uh percentages of level three or higher performance. Moving on to our second priority, mathematics. There we go. Um, after adopting and carefully implementing Bridges in Mathematics four years ago now, which is hard to believe. Memorial has continued to see significant growth in achievement over the past few years. Strong leadership from our math specialists, a sustained focus on alignment of instructional practice and pacing, and a targeted partnership between our special education team and our instructional specialists have all resulted in greater cohesiveness across classrooms as well as between classroom instruction and the work being done around students' I E P goals. As a result, we've seen all students, including our high needs population, experience considerable growth in the area of mathematics. Last year, seventy-five percent of our students met end-of-year benchmark on the I Ready Math Diagnostic and seventy-six percent of our grade three students met or exceeded expectation on our statewide summative assessment, the Smarter Balanced Assessment. This year, despite shifting much of our energy to the adoption of a new literacy compendium, we'll continue to prioritize our math success. We certainly don't want to see any any fallback in our in our math performance. We'll do this by continuing to use our grade level math collaborative meetings to ensure that each grid level's delivery of our existing Bridges units are aligned and paced appropriately. We'll continue to ensure that the instructional day is structured to include an adequate math block as well as a separate block of time for the number quarter component of Bridges Mathematics to be taught in every classroom. So again, you know, um really puzzling out that schedule so that we are meeting the um recommended minutes for each component of the compendium for literacy, but also not losing any time uh for our math block as well as our number corner, which are two separate parts of the day devoted to mathematics. We'll set up teachers for success who are new to our district or to the profession by assigning our instructional specialists to facilitate ongoing coaching cycles with each of them. And our success in math will be measured through the I Ready Math Diagnostic Assessment, which, like reading, is administered three times per year in grades one through three. When analyzing achievement, we'll look at the overall I Ready performance as well as specifically the measurement and data domain. Last year, um we looked at the geometry domain, and this year we're choosing to look at measurement and data. Those are both domains that um are heavily heavily covered as part of the number corner component of the day. Uh, so we want to see a direct correlation between that repeated practice every day in number corner and an improvement in those specific domains. In both areas, our goal is that seventy-five percent of memorial students or more will perform on or above grade level. Additionally, we'll closely monitor the performance of our high needs population on the Smarter Balanced Assessment to ensure that we continue to close any achievement gaps. And finally, our third priority, um positive school climate, you've heard Mary mention this several times. Providing a safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive culture is at the heart of everything we do at Memorial School. Our three simple school rules, taking care of ourselves, others, and things, provide a compass for our students. And our profile of the graduate skills, caring, imagination, common confidence, teamwork, and wonder provide a foundation for students' future success in school and beyond. This year, in compliance with new state legislation, we are focused on the development of Memorial School's Positive School Climate Plan. Our plan will include the use of restorative practices across all settings. Classroom lessons that are related to our profile of the graduate skills and monthly Cheetah Pratt ass- assemblies will continue. Supports for all students that include a second step lessons, calm down corners, daily morning meetings in all classrooms, visits with our therapy dog, MacGyver, as you just heard about, uh classroom contracts, which are new to our building this year, and restorative circles. Targeted tiered supports for students who may need a little bit more focused work in the area of social, emotional, or behavioral regulation. And our success in these areas will be measured by the number of happy, engaged learners who are able to regulate their behavior and emotions and build lasting relationships with their peers and adults around them with increasing levels of independence. As is always true, we also hope to see a reduction in bus and office and office discipline referrals and an increase in positive office referrals. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, I haven't heard you uh mention a summer reading program this year so far. You um.
So remember, these questions have to be directly related to to what is happening.
Well, I'm just, oh, well, I haven't. You haven't spoken to that. You um.
I actually mentioned it in my update that we had a celebration uh just a couple of weeks ago related to our summer reading.
Nice to hearing about that especially. And then um, so for literacy. Sorry, mathematics of math, um seventy-five percent goal, um. Is that the same goal we had last year?
It is. So um it was.
The standard that.
It's actually a pretty lofty goal, to be honest. Uh seventy-five percent of all students performing at or above uh grade level is something we would hope to always see and obviously exceed if, you know, if possible. Um, last year I said it as a pretty lofty goal and we did meet it. Um, we were seventy-five percent specifically on the geometry domain building wide last year and as well as seventy-five percent overall. Um, that's just speaking to I Ready. Smarter Balance only speaks to our third graders, although obviously all the work that goes into helping those students achieve as third graders beginning in preschool, um you know, has an impact. But um our Smarter Balance performance was also seventy-five percent. So i- it's a little bit um of a of a.
We didn't we excel? We were in the top ten percent.
We did. Seventy-five percent is a very high performance. It was it's a very high level of achievement. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So state average is less than that?
Yes, much less.
And same thing with literacy? I'm sorry, there's yeah, it was mathematics, not literacy.
We did not exceed. Um, we did not perform at the same level in literacy as we did in math last year. Um, and in fact, our our data was a little bit inconsistent in literacy, so our I Ready data did indicate a high level. Um, in fact, our uh overall I Ready end-of-year um performance was seventy-four percent of our students across the building performed at or above grade level by the end of the year on the I Ready Diagnostic. But on Smarter Balanced, which is only our third grade students, um we did not, we did not hit that goal. Uh, we are hopeful that, you know, with renewed attention to our literacy programming and a whole new literacy compendium that we have spent quite a bit of time rolling out and it will continue to uh devote time and energy to throughout this whole year that we're going to see some nice games in the area of literacy. You available? Thanks, Joey.
Yeah, yeah, it's still.
All right. At East Hampton Middle School, our focus is built around three key priorities: literacy, mathematics, and then school climate. Each priority is connected by a shared goal to strengthen tiered instruction, use data to drive decision-making, and build a school environment while students feel supported and challenged. Our first priority is to strengthen literacy outcomes across all grade levels. We'll be holding monthly data meetings in order to analyze student performance trends and adjust small group instruction. This year, we're expanding our data review process to include our special education teachers who will collaborate with specialists to analyze student data within their caseloads. This collaboration will guide specialized instruction and ensure consistent support for students, both in the general education setting and within the learning resource classroom aligned to each student's I E P goals and objectives. Teachers will continue to use small group instruction twice per week for students who are below grade level. And across content areas, we're embedding informational text reading in subjects like science and social studies. Another focus is increasing academic discourse, helping students explain their thinking, build on each other's ideas, and use evidence from texts to support their responses. Our goal is to see the percentage of students reading at or above grade level increase from where we left last year. Where fifty-five percent will increase to sixty-five percent by the end of the year. And for seventy percent of students who begin below grade level, to make at least one year's growth by the end of the school year. In addition, the end-of-the-year I Ready Diagnostic, specific to informational text domain, will improve ten percent from the beginning of the year. Our second priority focus on focuses on mathematics. This year, we'll be implementing a professional learning plan designed to strengthen consistency and instructional quality across all grade levels. For the first few years of implementation of illustrative mathematics, we focus on learning about the curriculum, um working on lessons and the pacing of units in all grade levels. And this year, we're going to include classroom visits and coaching in partnership with our correct consultant. We're also introducing a math walkthrough tool to help us monitor and support task fidelity, student discourse, and the continued high-quality implementation of illustrative mathematics. The data review with special education, our specialists and our math teachers will also, like I explained in literacy, will also be taking place for mathematics as well. Small group instruction will continue for students who need additional support, and we're placing a special emphasis this year on improving the geometry domain. Our goal is to raise the number of students at or above grade level in math from fifty-two percent to sixty-two percent, and to reduce the number of tier-two students from thirty percent down to twenty percent. The end-of-the-year I Ready Diagnostic, specific to the geometry domain, will improve ten percent from the beginning of the year. In addition, we're continuing to connect math to real-world applications through our family and consumer science program, where we continue to develop curriculum for stuff at the eighth grade that includes applied math tasks aligned to priority standards. Our third priority focuses on school climate and a social, social, emotional growth. We know that academic success happens best when students feel safe, connected, and valued. This year, we're aligning our practices with new state climate legislation and expanding our use of restorative practices in classrooms. We'll provide professional learning throughout the year to help teachers use proactive and restorative strategies that strengthen relationships in classroom community. We're also building structures that promote belonging, like grade-level town halls to celebrate students, classroom community-building activities, classroom contracts that are revisited each quarter. And through ongoing student, staff, and family surveys, we'll gather feedback to guide our work. And our goal is to improve student attendance by at least five percent by the end of the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Green Castle, are we good to go? Did you want to wrap that up at all or moving on?
We're moving on. So I can just, I'll share it just very quickly. Um, so this evening, uh Principal Moore was going to be here. We were going to have the elementary as well as the middle school, but uh very sadly, we extend our console condolences to Principal Moore. His mother passed away over the weekend. So it was important for him to be home this evening. So he will present at the second meeting with Principal Werner on his advancement plan, as well as uh Director of Curriculum Clark will present on the data.
Thank you. Hey, we have no unfinished business this evening. Anyone have future business? Hearing none without no new business. We do have new business.
I have a question on. Um. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I haven't seen where we um uh, let me say um, have a presentation for the amount of work the PTO does. Do we give them awards or or recognize them in any manner, shape, or form? I don't recall uh us presenting awards to the PTO. They, I believe, last year, didn't they give over ten thousand dollars to our school system? And I think we owe them an award or some way of showing our gratitude for the tremendous amount of work they do for us. Um, I just heard tonight um some of some of what they do. I don't, I know they do more throughout the year.
Thank you, Sal, for recognizing that.
Is there some way we can do that?
So just so, just as a reminder, that last Board of Education meeting, the middle schools uh Friends of Education Award was Amanda Cole. She is the president of the PTO at the middle school. And if certainly the board would like to give further recognition to the wonderful PTO work that's done in this school district. Uh, we would be happy to oblige and to bring our PTO leadership to the board to let you express your appreciation for their work, just as we do every single day.
And our administrators are also really wonderful about their update. So, thank you. Okay, we do have um several policies up for first read this evening. Um, Subrever is not here to lay them out for us, but we can just briefly go over um thirteen point one, which is the review of policy thirty-one seventy-one, which has to do with the non-lasting fund. It is a legislative update. Um, all these policies you received in your packet. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thirteen point two is the review of recommended policy five-one-one-eight point two um which has to do with educational opportunities for military children. This is also a legislative update. And a new policy for us. So does anyone have any questions on that one? No, and finally, thirteen point three is the review of policy five-one-three-one point nine three, which is a um a new district policy for us regarding participation fees as we had to change some of those for this year. Um, any questions on that one? Okay, all these will come forward for second read at our next meeting. Personal actions, we have none this evening. Audience and citizens, would anyone like to speak? Anyone? Charlie online? Nope, nope, so nobody's online. Okay. Hearing none. Dr. Green Castle, calendar of events?
Uh, just very quickly, just a reminder that our high school seniors are in Washington DC. Unfortunately, this uh moment that they are there, Washington DC, unfortunately, is not our place that it normally is, but they're going to try to make the most out of this trip.
You're not.
Um, uh, I wanted, I made special mention of this this evening due to the fact that one of our board members uh children was the National Fire Fire Prevention Week poster contest winner last year. So I was going to make mention of the fact that this is National Fire Prevention Week, and of course, we will have that poster contest that will be happening. Um, what was mentioned earlier about the Connecticut Groom for Kids uh week that's happening, the Farm of School Program. This upcoming Thursday, uh along with that corn chucking contest, uh which back in the colonial days, you used to call that the husking bay. Uh, that corn chucking contest that's actually happening at the middle school will be attended by Jen Bove, your former uh Director of Nutrition Services, who now is the head. your former Director of Nutrition Services, who now is the head of the State Department of Nutrition Services. She has notified Director Casselli that she will be coming as long as the deputy commissioner associated with the nutrition program, as well as another representative from the state nutrition services. So if any of the board members would like to be present, we do have some dignitaries who will be here with us this upcoming Thursday. You're welcome to come during those lunch waves. I did want to make mention of the timeframes of lunch waves, and I really don't know what time they start for the three lunch waves.
Eleven and then the end at one with eighth grade and meet at one. I mean, eleven and one?
And you can come husk some corn with the students. This year, going back to the PTO, they are sponsoring once again Scott Driscoll. And I say this in shares with the Board of Education, but hopefully, community members, if you could help get the word out on this. It's been in the update, the district update. Scott Driscoll is a retired state police officer who has devoted, honestly, I believe he's been doing this for over ten years now, going to school districts to educate families, especially parents, on the use of social media and their students' access to it. The things that he shares are shocking. And it's very helpful for families to really understand the new systems he gets. He stays up to date with all of these new social media trends. And he educates families and parents about, these are the things to be monitoring. And he actually gives demonstrations of the types of information that can be gleaned in a very short period of time from anybody who has access to these social media pieces. Last year, Memorial School hosted the event. And we have some that weren't attendance, but we are really hoping that there is going to be a significant attendance that's here for that. So please help us get the word out. October fifteenth, it's been in all the school-based newsletters. This is a K through twelve event. It's an adult-only presentation. This is not to bring students to. But it is an evening. It's going to be at East Hampton High School. I believe it's going to be in the T bell?
No, it's going to be in the auditorium.
In the auditorium. Okay, so it's going to be in the auditorium from six to seven-thirty. Highly engaging. He knows what he's talking about. And it would be so helpful, especially in today's day and age, for our families to understand all that's happening with social media. Great, a great event for board members, but parents, families to come to, to hear.
It is adult-only, but the Interact Club is providing childcare in the library.
Oh, very good. So if anybody didn't hear that, Interact Club will be providing childcare in the building. So the parents can bring the children and the children will be supervised. And then the last I was going to mention, which I've already said, mentioned to you, is just, it's the parent series. I really hope we have good attendance at these. So I would ask board members to, if you could, please be present for those because we may hear questions. We may hear lots of support from families and and I would really ask that you be a part of these as well. So thank you very much, everyone.
And I just want to say, having heard Scott Driscoll, his information is fascinating and terrifying and really, really valuable. So I would encourage everyone to attend. Okay, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session for discussion and possible action regarding a superintendent's school evaluation format and professional goals and objectives for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And I would like to invite Dr. Green Castle into said session.
So I will.
Motion's second. All right. Thank you, everybody.